All right. Good morning, everyone. Let's call order this Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, February tenth. The roll call?
Well, Colt, I see that she's on, but she appears to be muted from my, my screen.
All right. Well, wait a second.
Are you guys there?
Sure, Anna. Go ahead.
That's weird. I'm unmuted on the phone. So Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. Now for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right. Today's invocation will be led by Pastor James Callaway of First Baptist Church in Ottawa. Go ahead, Pastor.
Let us pray. I lift up my eyes to the hills. Where does my help come from? My help come from the Lord, the Maker of heaven and earth. Almighty God, Creator of every good and perfect gift that is from above, coming down from the Father of the heavenly lights, who does not change like shifting shadows. We come for this monthly meeting of the Franklin County Commissioners. We give you thanks and praise for all of our commissioners and their families. We ask you to give them wisdom from above, that the wisdom that comes from heaven is first of all pure, then peace-loving, considerate, submissive, full of mercy and good fruit, impartial and sincere, peacemakers who soar in peace, raise the harvest of righteousness. Almighty, please bless this meeting today, that everything will be accomplished according to your will. Be with all of us during this COVID-19 time. Protect all of our citizens and watch over us, I pray. In your name, amen and amen.
All right. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we'll go to correspondence and organizational business now. We're going to receive an update on Advent Health's sales tax usage in 2020 and projections for 2021. Dallas listed as presenting. Is that the case? There we are, Dallas.
Good morning, Colt and Commissioners. I, it's, it's good to, to see you and at least hear your voices. And we appreciate the time to be able to touch base with you and give you an update related to these two things. I think before we kick off, I would just say that we're equally as pleased as you are related to recent trends and COVID and seeing our county numbers trend downward. That's, that's a great sign for our community and, and I think for our hospital as well going forward. And then also appreciate the, the good work that's being done on the county side of things related to vaccine distribution. I believe some of our folks are going to be participants with, with you going forward to help on some of that distribution. But that can't happen fast enough either. We just want our, our local Ottawa and Franklin County residents to feel or to be, to be safe and, and do our best to begin to put some of this behind us. So. But thank you for the time. So from a process perspective, related to the tax dollars, each year we, we go through a process with our Advent Health Board as well as the RMH Board, presenting those, sharing those, where, what we've done with them in 2020, as well as then sharing what our plan would be to use them and ultimately getting RMH's vote of approval related to those tax dollars. So to kick it off, I'm going to ask Harmatt Beebe, who's our CFO, to share what we did in 2020 and share what we had projected and then what we ended up using the dollars for. There'll, there'll be some variance there and I think we could all appreciate that 2020, 2020 was a different kind of year and, and how we would have set out for that year to look like turned into a whole different thing going forward. So Harmatt's going to share 2020 and then afterwards I'll tell you about 2021 and what we'd anticipate going forward. So I think she's going to be able to bring some slides up here to, to show you.
Yeah, I have some slides to share, but the screen sharing is disabled by the host. So if someone is able to enable that for me, I can bring that up. Otherwise, I can just speak to it.
Hopefully we have. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Around there. He's not in the commission chambers. I don't know that we'll be able right away.
Now, Harmatt, are, are these the same slides that you've shared with me previously?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And the commissioners should all have those. I sent them there privately. So if we can't screen share, then they should, I mean, they've seen them and should be able to follow along. So you can probably start walking through them.
Okay, I will do so. So if you, if you recall from the slides that Derek shared with you, our total number of dollars that we had available for 2020 was just a little over 2.7 million. This was higher than what we had originally anticipated and what was approved a little over a year ago for 2020, spent by about $300,000. Ironically enough, with the pandemic, the sales tax dollars have actually been higher over the last few months than we would have expected. So I actually expected that with, with the pandemic, folks would hold on to their dollars a little bit more and spend less, and it has been the opposite. So I'm sure that that has been beneficial for the county to see overall, to see an increase in local spending. Our largest bucket where the dollars were spent in 2020 was our charity care. So we had $2 million that were attributed to the local sales tax dollar utilization. As you may be familiar, our charity care policy is a very generous policy that enables our non-elective medically necessary procedures to be funded for those patients who are not able to afford it. Our policy is generous in that it qualifies a large number of people for their care and most of our dollars that we see spent are actually used for patients who receive care in the emergency room. So we are glad to be able to provide care for those that are having the worst day or the worst moment of their life being in the emergency room and not have to worry about after the fact how they will be able to pay for that care. So that represented $2 million for 2020. I will tell you that our actual charity care is above that and it will continue to be above that every year. So just because funding through sales tax is not the amount that we have applications for, we do not stop approving those applications. So we apply our charity policy consistently throughout the year. The second line item that we had on there was our MAB repair expense and the MAB stands for the Medical Arts Building. As most of you are aware, that is the building that is located across the street from the hospital. And about a year and a half ago, it had some significant water-related damage that we had to go in and repair. And it was a larger project that any of us would have anticipated that it would have been. And so that represented a little over half a million dollars. We are so pleased to say that that building is now put back together. It's, it looks beautiful and we're excited to get services up and going in that building once again. The other item, the other large item that you would have seen on that slide is our AICU, which is advanced ICU care. And this we implemented right on the cusp of COVID. We were so glad that this was able to be expedited. This was about $140,000 and this enabled us to keep critically ill patients here in Ottawa as opposed to having to transfer them to another facility. So we were able to care for a lot of COVID patients in this time period through the use of AICU, which essentially is a lot of technology that enables intensivists to be available to our patients as well as to our hospitalists 24/7. And it has video camera built into the room where the intensivists are able to see the patients and care for them virtually. The other two smaller line items that you saw on there was routine capital operations. I will tell you that when the pandemic first hit, we put a lot of our routine capital spend on hold. There was a lot of uncertainty at the time and we didn't want to be spending cash at that point. We're in a much better place today, thankfully, from that perspective. But our routine spend was a lot lower than what would have been anticipated for 2020. One line item that you would have seen in the approved column for 2020 was a microscope replacement. This is a surgical microscope used in eye surgeries and we delayed the purchase of that till 2021. And so Dallas will touch on that a little bit more in the 2021 budget. But we are still fully moving forward with that. We just did not do it in 2020. So that sums up our spend for 2020. Are there any questions I can answer about that before Dallas moves on to 2021?
Regarding charitable care, so if we go back to the scenario you gave with the emergency room visit and that being forgiven, is there a sliding fee scale? Is, I mean, are you just taking basically bad debt that you're writing off and that's what charitable care is? And what's the process there?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So the process requires any person who wants to be considered for charitable care to apply to our financial service office. There's a pretty simple application that they have to complete as well as provide some information on income and whatnot, then we then use to see if they qualify. So this is based on, it's truly based on need. And so if they meet a certain threshold of federal poverty level, then that would qualify them for that. And then their application would get processed. So this is for self-pay patients who do not have any insurance or for patients who may have insurance, but their balance out of, balance after insurance, they are not able to afford and they meet the criteria. So it, it is based on meeting a certain threshold for each individual.
And it, so it doesn't include bad debt?
It doesn't, it doesn't include true bad debt, but it would include balance after insurance if they still qualify for the, for the charity policy.
Okay. Yeah, by bad debt, I, I meant, you know, basically the debt that's deemed, you know, after a certain period of time uncollectible, or you're just not going to get it, you write it off. I didn't know if that was included in that amount or not.
Correct. So true bad debt. So if an account has gone on for over 120 days or whatever it may be, then that is truly bad debt. And after a certain amount of time, then you write that off and that is, that is separate. So we do also have separate bad debt write-offs that are separate from charity.
Are those reimbursed with sales tax dollar?
Those are not.
This is Commissioner Ian Dickinson. Do you, do they have to apply then before, to be considered bad debt? So it's not, you don't send it to collection and then finally write it off?
So, yes. So a patient has so many days after discharge to turn in their application and all the required paperwork. And when, while we are in the process of processing someone's charity care, they will not be sent to bad debt or collections during that time period.
Colt, may I make a comment?
For sure. Go ahead.
You all may recall, I'm on the, I'm on the board, thanks to the invitation from the hospital and from all of you approving that. And so was able to sit and listen to the presentation on this that you just heard and a little more depth and also what, what Dallas is going to share with you for 2021. And just wanted to share with you that the board was very pleased, very supportive of both sides of this, 2020 and 2021. We were especially pleased that they saw the wisdom in switching from maybe some other fixed cost or other capital improvement and shift of those funds to help our citizens who maybe couldn't pay, fully realizing that this doesn't cover all the services they provide, that they aren't reimbursed. But the board was, was, like I said, very pleased that they chose to not invest in some things, understood that we were in a unique situation and decided to utilize a large majority of the funds to help our citizenry during a very tough year. So just wanted to share with you how the board received that and, and the, and the opinion of the board was very positive. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Any other commissioners have questions for 2020?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I don't have any questions, but we might just say that that was Paul Bean. I don't think he said who he was, but just for people to know who that was that was talking.
Sorry about that. Yeah, that was me.
All right. I think you're good to move on to 2021. Did I lose you?
No, sorry. I'm toggling between the slides and, and the Zoom. Yeah, no. So one, one comment just related to 2020 that I'll just close on. And I think she, Harmatt did a good job of representing that. But the advanced intensive care feature that we were added through the pandemic, as you know, you know, our volumes have really surged in the last three months and we're glad to see those tail off. But during that period of time, this really helped us keep our citizens close here. And, and that was something that we were able to fast track through. We had intended, intended for that to come in the fourth quarter of 2020. And when the pandemic really started, we evaluated what, what the things are that we would need to really be able to care for our citizens as quickly as possible. So we worked through Advent Health to fast track that and get that rolled out. So we had that in place, I believe it was in June. Used it some through the summer, but our volumes weren't as high at that time. And, but it, it paid dividends for us here in the last three months. So essentially an intensivist, you know, somebody that sees critical care patients all the time is readily available to our hospitalists 24/7. So middle of the night, three in the morning, if we need an intensivist size on, on a patient, they're able to do that and zoom in with better visual capabilities than the, the human eye. They can't lay eyes, lay hands on them. But anyway, we just feel like that's been a big step forward and, and beyond now, I think that's going to help us better hold on to patients with higher level of acuity here in our market and believe that we can safe, very safely care for those patients. So just a little comment there. So as we roll into 2021, as Harmatt mentioned, charity care is something that ultimately could be the sole utilization of the tax dollars in, in the amount of, say, of charity care that's provided. But we really wanted to utilize them for kind of a balanced approach related to what our year looks like in 2021. So we've got a million dollars set aside for that in 2021. And again, that number exceeds that. As you step down to pharmacy, and this one's obviously a big number here. The last time the joint commission was here and did an, an assessment and review in the fall of 2019, there are certain regulations that surround our pharmacy and the way you prepare medications and the facilities around which we do that. And we were given, we had a successful survey. They thought we did a great job. And this actually predates my time here. But they were complimentary of the hospital as a whole and the care that is provided here. But they're related to our pharmacy. It was highly recommended and something that we need to resolve is the way we prepare medications, most specifically our IV infusions and those cancer-type drugs and things like that. So we have, we have a little bit of a time. We've got a window of time to resolve this issue. The problem is and challenge is that our pharmacy is located in our basement and it's in a smaller space and it's not easily expandable. And so we've got a situation where we've got to resolve this and a lot of this deals with ventilation and how we appropriately vent out some of the substances that we mix. And so this project hasn't been fully put together from an architect and engineering perspective. We've had some eyes on it and we know that it's going to be an expensive project. We don't know exactly how expensive that is, but we've heard in the ballpark of a million dollars. So we've got a line item here at a million dollars, knowing that that could move. And we're hopeful that it's not all of that. But it's either going to be an expansion and fix of our location downstairs or relocation of our pharmacy within our building somewhere else, depending on both our strategic outlook of where it should be located as well as cost. So if it's more, less costly to move it somewhere else in the building, that'll be a strong consideration. Just a comment here, like any other project that we would, of significance that we would have here at the hospital, we would expect a competitive bidding process for that with also an understanding that if, if we can, and if we've got the capability, quality and, and right, right costs, we would, we would do our very best to utilize local services as well. So just, just a positioning statement on kind of our stance related to construction here. So the additional line item below there is the microscope replacement that Dr. Frank, our local ophthalmologist uses and board member. This is ultimately to bring the quality of care of our eye patients to current standard. Some of our surrounding facilities that he works at have this technology and we're, we need to move forward with this. Then with each, any given year, we're going to have routine capital. We may have more than $100,000 of routine capital, but we've set aside $100,000 for, to be spent specific to that. And then lastly, on our, the last line there is a cancer clinic. And so I'm happy to share twofold. The Medical Arts Building is home for Darren Klisch and, and his cancer clinic, which is radiation oncology. So that clinic will be able to get back up and running and will be, will allow those radiation oncology patients to be able to receive care here in Franklin County rather than travel up the road to Lawrence or down the road to Chanu, where his other two locations exist. Additionally, over this last year, we'd heard from the community and, and ran, put together a performa and recognized that cancer is something that we thought we, we wanted to bring to the community, knowing that getting in your car when you're sick and driving up the road is not a great prospect, but it's what our citizens have to do. So we have made the move to begin providing cancer care here. We worked in good alignment with our MD Anderson Cancer Center at Shawnee Mission, Advent Health Shawnee Mission, to put together a program here that we believe that's going to be high quality and is going to be in alignment with the quality that they provide. Our medical oncologists that provide care there are now down here providing care in a clinic. And in the early part of March, we expect to have infusions, an infusion clinic available here to our citizens as well. So we're excited about that. And this really is related to some of the, the components that allow us to get that started. So that, that additional, that addition of the cancer clinic increases our expectation that the pharmacy upgrade needs to occur in a timely fashion as we're currently moving chemotherapy. We will be moving chemotherapy between Shawnee Mission and our location. And it'll be safe and compliant and all of that. But it's, it's a process that we don't want to necessarily have to do for the long haul. So that's an update on 2021 tax dollars and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Well, we greatly appreciate your time and the update, Dallas. Glad to hear what's going on at the hospital with the sales tax dollars. I don't hear anybody coming up with any questions. So we're going to move on. And like I say, we appreciate you.
Colt, thank you so much. Thank you, each commissioner and Paul for your comments. I'd just say that we're, we continue to be excited to provide care here in the community and work collaboratively with each one of you to do so. You're likely well aware, but we on the operations side are sincerely appreciative of the tax dollars and know that that is ultimately foundational to be able to provide an advanced, great quality care here in the community. So each of you should be applauded for the commitment on that side of it. And we just appreciate your support. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks. We'll move down to public comment now. Janet, is there any today?
We have none.
All right. Our consent agenda includes minutes from our meeting on February 6th and tax change orders in the amount of a negative $7,968.88. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dickinson said move.
Mr. Dunn, second.
Commissioner Sotomayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Down to items of business. Our first item is the continuation of the conversation we've been heading, having. It is to consider for approval modification of the funding agreement between Franklin County, the City of Ottawa and FCDC for 2021. I believe Paul Bean's on. So I'll just let you present.
All right. Thank you, Colt. This is Paul Bean, Executive Director of Franklin County Development Council. Good morning, commissioners. This is something that we brought to you a couple of weeks ago for your review. This is basically a change in wording in the funding agreement, as Colt's outlined, where FCDC is requesting a, a small change. The, the current agreement indicates that FCDC will put a 10%, 10% of the funds received from the city and the county in reserve each year. And the, the wording change recommended or suggested here is that it would say, remove the 10% requirement and basically say whenever FCDC has a surplus, all of those funds would be moved to reserve. But it also allows FCDC from time to time to utilize funds over and above the budget. So there'd be a draw in reserve for special projects. Much like you saw us do in 2020, we invested extra money in marketing research for target industry and also for marketing programming and, and redesign. Last year, the original budget had, actually had a $54,000 draw in the budget. And so if we had followed the, the policy, we would have put 10% of the county and city funds in reserve and then turned right around and pulled that back out. That seemed a little disingenuous and a little confusing, I think. And so my attempt and our attempt is to make this pretty clear that whenever we have a surplus, it goes to reserve. Two years ago, FCDC had a surplus of 84,000. The year before that, we had a surplus of 34,000. Obviously, way over 10% was put back in reserve and built that account up. Our reserve right now is a little over 270,000. We want to have these funds. We do not have any intention of drawing them down through operational overruns. The intent is just to give the organization The intent is just to give the organization flexibility. And this was taken to the city commission. They've reviewed it and discussed it and they have approved the recommendation that you're seeing here today. And so if you approve this today, we can execute the agreement with the city and the county and move forward. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I definitely appreciate your desire to run a transparent organization like you've outlined there.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? Affirmative motion would be to approve modifying the funding agreement between Franklin County, the City of Ottawa, and FCDC for 2021.
Commissioner Dunn, I make the motion to approve the agreement.
All right. We need that second.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Commissioner Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right. Now to our second item of business, which is a rezoning application. Larry Walrod, our planning and zoning directors, on.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners. This is a request to rezone approximately 12.89 acres from the A1 agricultural zoning district to a C2 highway commercial zoning district. This property, most of you are probably familiar with, is the old Case International site. And they are purchasing the additional acreage from the Rumford family. The planning commission gave consideration to this in January this year and have forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of this rezoning to rezone it from the A1 to the C2 zoning district. The affirmative action for this would be to make a motion to approve the rezoning application to rezone approximately 12.89 acres from A1 to a C2 highway commercial zoning district and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly. I think this is pretty straightforward. The shape of that parcel is somewhat unique and that's because of the drainage system that goes through there. Rather than to disrupt the farming practices by drawing something that's more rectangular, this does provide the frontage that the tractor operations want, but at the same time is maintaining the remainder of that and usable agricultural production. So I think it's a win-win situation and we definitely support the planning commission's recommendations. I have nothing further unless any of you have questions.
Hello?
Yep. We got you. I was waiting for, for questions from anyone. There looked like there's going to be any, an affirmative motion would be to approve application 2012-1817 to rezone approximately 12.89 acres from A1 agriculture zoning district to a C2 highway commercial zoning district and amend our county zoning map accordingly. Would anyone care to make that motion?
It's Don, yes.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
All right. Down to staff reports. Derek.
All right. Thanks, Colt. This is Derek. I've got a handful of things here. I'll try to move quickly. First, for a couple of months now, we've been talking about your retreat. Janet was finally able to get that scheduled. We are going to do that on the fourth and fifth of March. And so that is a Thursday and Friday. We are going to do it at the same location. We've done it for the last couple of years. We can talk more about the logistics of getting, you know, to and from there as we get closer. But we'll just obviously want to be somewhat cognizant of, of social distancing and best practices regarding COVID-19. And so March 4th and March 5th are what we are looking at. The budget, Janet and I have started discussions on that. I am actually having a department head Zoom call this afternoon to discuss it with my department heads and the elected officials. I will tell you, and it's not my intention to get down into the weeds on either of these, but, but certainly if you have questions, Janet or I, one of the two can answer this, but there are a couple of pieces of pending legislation that, that are going to make this a difficult budget year as well as the 2023 budget year, budget year. Senator Tyson's legislation being one of them, and I know we've talked about that a lot, but there's also a piece of legislation being discussed. And I'm really at 30,000 feet here, but that basically would allow businesses who have been subject to public health orders to apply for reimbursement of their property tax dollars from the county. And the bill would require that we reimburse them out of our general fund. That bill needs fleshed out substantially, but it, it could have a fairly devastating effect on our budget. And so my point in saying this is, you know, we, we've ran a pretty tight budget for, you know, the last four or five years, but my message to my, my team is that we, we are going to have to be exceptionally tight right now. Not only because of this legislation and, and, and not fully understanding its effects, but also because of COVID-19. We'll talk about that more here in a bit, but you know, there's a growing sense of optimism because we're now getting vaccines into people and I personally share that optimism. But it is also true that there are, it seems like all the time, there are emerging variants of COVID, some of which are now showing to be fairly resistant to our vaccines. And so it's really hard to know when this is going to end. And we certainly have increased expenses because of that. And so if we're still doing this well into 2022 and we don't get more stimulus funds, then, then obviously, you know, our budget is in a difficult place. And so just kind of want the board to start thinking about, I mean, obviously we work for you and, and I can make this budget look like basically whatever you want it to look like, but this, this next couple of years, I don't believe are going to be years where it would be wise to do a whole lot growth-wise, just because of factors that are completely out of our control. You know, I, I think we, we, in talking to the five of you, we've maybe established some public works priorities, which I think obviously are appropriate. Keeping our pay plan in place to the extent we can would obviously, I hope, be a priority. Maybe some countywide software stuff we've discussed, but just generally I, I think the, the recommendations that are going to come from staff are going to aspire to be fairly flat. So just something to start thinking about. Commissioner Waymire and I had a great meeting last week with Paul Bean and the city. Just, it's something, I talked about this last week, but something we're going to start doing monthly just to make sure we're all on the same page, all of us being the city, county, and FCDC regarding a wide array of economic development matters, but primarily proximity park. Paul is currently in the process of, of looking at our covenants out there and proposing modifications to those covenants that we believe will make us more attractive, the, some of these newer businesses. And, and certainly appreciate his work on that. He's done a fantastic job. And, and what I, I think is important, certainly for us as well as the city, is that we remain flexible throughout this process. Paul's been great at a lot of things. One of them is getting feedback, getting feedback from site selectors, from people who do this for a living. And we have to be willing to take advice from those people, people who are experts in the field. And we have to be willing to change the way we do things. Because if we don't, then we're going to sit on that park forever. And certainly that's not what anyone wants. And so we will continue to update this board as we have those meetings. But certainly you have any questions, you, you know, you're welcome to ask me, but Paul's two doors down in our suite, so, and certainly know that he welcomes the opportunity to speak with all of you. So ever have questions, feel free to stop in and see him. Yesterday, and I'm, I'm going to kind of start transitioning into COVID, Casey and I had a long conversation with a gentleman associated with the car show just about the potential for having the car show this year. And, and great discussion and, and we told him basically what, we, we told the fair board the same thing, that by all means, you know, if you can start the planning process, we would encourage you to do so, but we are in no way able to tell these organizations whether or not they're going to be able to have a normal event. Like I, I look at, things with COVID literally change daily and that's not an exaggeration. So when you're looking at an event that's, gosh, six, eight, 10 months out, like there's just, or not 10 months out, but six or eight months out, like it, it is literally impossible to, to do that. So we, we just told him, basically you can start planning, but it would be wise to have alternative plans in place, plans to hold a modified event. And so that's my understanding that that's, that is how they are going to proceed. We obviously continue our COVID response. I'm going to have another vaccine clinic on Saturday. I'm going to turn this over to Casey shortly to give a vaccine update. I will tell you I have sent, we are currently in the bottle house. I told you last week, we wanted to get in there to see how it works. If it works well, then we were going to look at, you know, an arrangement with them. We believe that it is working well. To that end, I've sent a proposed agreement over to their ownership group. Just so all of you know, basically the terms are that it is a three-month agreement, February, March, and April. We have an option in that agreement to extend it for additional 30-day periods. And we, in consideration of, of getting to use that space, we are agreeing to pay the electricity bill and the gas bill up to $2,500. And, and looking into this, you know, I've been told by several people that, that being able to rent that space for $2,500 would be a pretty good deal in and of itself for us. And so we are going to pay electricity and gas up to that amount. I don't think anybody expects it to be that high, so I don't anticipate we'll spend that much. But certainly think that i- if they agree to that, and my understanding is they will, it'll be a good deal for both sides because obviously we'll bring a lot of traffic through there. We'll get to see that venue and, and it'll be good advertising for them. So any questions on any of that before I transition this over to Casey?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Is that $2,500 a month or for the three months or?
It is 20, up to $2,500 per month for the three months.
Derek, this is Don.
Yes, sir.
I think it's going to be a little off that one before, before we venture on. I've been told that Walmart is going to start giving vaccinations next week. Have you been contacted or know anything?
Yes, I believe we have. I will let Nick discuss that. Those are discussions that he's had. And Casey might be able to chime in as well, but yeah, we'll, if you sit tight, we'll answer that for you, Don.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? All right. Thank you. Casey, do you want to go ahead?
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yep.
Okay. Much like last week, I have a lot of information. And if you need me to stop and answer questions, just let me know. But the Health Department is still working on, we've actually almost completed the over 75 population. And after today's shots, we will have administered 1,700 vaccines. Last week, we did about 250 doses. 200 of those were first doses for the over 75 population. And as Derek mentioned, those were all administered at the bottle house and it seems to be going very smoothly. I do want to mention that the Health Department and myself, I'm sure Derek has to, have received several kudos on our social media, also emails, phone calls. There's also been mailed in letters. And I know our constituents are seeing a lot of things on the news about long lines and people waiting out in the cold and they just don't have to do that there and, or do that here and they are super grateful for that. So our team, the Health Department vaccine team is really running a really great vaccine clinic and, and our constituents are really thankful for that. So kudos to them. Also, emergency management has a big, big role in that. This week, the team has really turned things up because we have gotten several doses of vaccine, not only from the state, but also from the Health Partnership Clinic. I know on Monday and Tuesday, they administered 180 first doses and 80 second doses. And then with today and Thursday and Saturday, there will be almost 500 more first doses going in arms. And then also on Saturday, we will be administering 290 second doses. I guess that's Friday and Saturday, but Saturdays will be the second doses for our first group of individuals that were over the age of really 80. I think all of them were over the age of maybe even 90. So that's exciting to get them back in for their second doses. So the team will be administering over 1,000 doses just this week. And as a reminder, the Saturday clinic will still take place at the Ottawa Middle School. I know the Health Department is still working on appointments for Saturday's first doses that they're giving. And we are currently scheduling people that were born in 1947, so those turning 74 this year. And after filling Saturday's schedule, we should be most, most of the way through all the individuals that were born in 1948. So I know they're still making those calls. If you're listening and you were born in 1948, there's still a possibility that you'll be getting a call to get a vaccine this Saturday. As of today, we do have about 440 first doses on hand to be administered next week as well as 290 second doses. We received all of those just yesterday from the state. And then those second doses are for next Saturday, February 20th, for more people over the age of 75. And then I will mention too, because I get this question a lot, for the last four weeks, the Health Department has received a consistent allotment of about 300 to 400 doses. I know it was 300 for several weeks and then we've gotten 400 doses last two weeks from the state each week and those are first doses. And then we also see that we get the second doses from the state at the same time. Um, we also received three-hundred-and-twenty doses of vaccine from the Health Partnership Clinic that we have to split because those, um, that is their instruction to us. We can't, um, give them all as first doses. We have to keep back the second doses of those. So, um, one last thing is, I know that our seventy-year-old to seventy-four population, we still have about six-hundred-and-fifty people on the list. And I know that, um, there's some very anxious people still over the age of seventy, thinking that, you know, we've lost them, or they just aren't gonna get their vaccine. Like, I can assure you, we're getting there as quickly as we can, but there's still a lot of people even over the age of seventy to get a vaccine. Um, and if you are over the a, you know, over the age of sixty-five and you're not on the list, you can still call two-two-nine-three-five-three-one, um, to get on that list. And I think we still get phone calls every day, but a lot of phone calls are just individuals anxiously awaiting their vaccine. So, any questions from the Commissioners?
Uh, did I miss it in there? Where did you say they'd be doing the second one that Friday?
Um, Friday, I believe, is at the Bottle House. Um, but you should be getting a call about that.
Okay.
Or Nick, I guess you can chime in if I'm wrong, but Friday is, to my knowledge, is at the Bottle House.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Casey? Let's move on to Nick. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Nick. Um, as Casey said, we're getting a lot of vaccines. We've still looking at the average of four-hundred a week, and, and that's positive for us. I'd like to see more, but we're rolling with it. Um, so far to date, uh, we've got two-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-eight total positive cases. Um, and just a quick one, due to the Bottle House having an event on Saturday, the vaccines on Friday will be at the Commission Chambers. So, there's people setting up for the event on Friday, so that will be moved to the Commission Chambers. Uh, we plan to do a large vaccination clinic on, uh, Saturday, and Sa- Saturday this week and Saturday next week. One of the things I wanna talk about, we've gotten a lot of phone calls about people that are concerned about the weather. Um, I've worked with Brandon. Uh, we have a planning meeting today to discuss this, but we, uh, plan to have the sidewalks cleaned. Uh, we're looking at extra people to help individuals in and out of the facility. So, um, we've gotta get these vaccines done, and, and the weather's gonna play a strong part in, in, in the day, but we will have the staff and availability to get people in and out as quickly as possible and make sure that, uh, we got the, uh, grounds at, at the, uh, middle school cleaned to, uh, make sure we don't have any falls and that. So, it is going to be a cold day, but we'll, we'll get through it. Uh, we're jumping into the testing side of things. Pomona has officially stated that they're wrapping up their operations out there. I know I told you last couple of weeks, and I keep seeing they keep doing it, but they're wrapping up. I'm gonna be moving that to a different location. The Osho has been shut down, and the, and Pomona has been shut down the majority of this weekend, the major, they'll be shut down the majority of next weekend, the Osho, due to weather. Um, Franklin County continues to do testing on anybody that calls, um, to get scheduled at the trailer here in the Commission Chamber, or, or in the annex parking lot. Uh, one thing I have learned, and this, i- i- it's always a, a never-ending, uh, I guess, well, we use the word battle, but it's never-ending, where we, we continue to find partners that start doing things, and then we have to, uh, reach out and, and work with them. Uh, Auburn Pharmacy in, in Wellsville has started doing, uh, COVID testing. Uh, so, I just learned that two days ago, and one of the things that we found is, working with the schools and stuff, there's different information being said between all these facilities. So, we're gonna be working with them to make sure that when they do testing, they work with us, and, and we, uh, are getting the same information out about quarantines and, and how long people need to be away from things. So, it's nice to see we're getting other people that are doing testing or other locations, but we wanna make sure we're working with them. With testing, I kinda wanted to highlight a couple of things. Uh, you go back to November, the state of Kansas in November, throughout the whole state, we're testing about six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-seven people a day. Franklin County was testing seventy-three people a day, and we had a positive rate of about eighteen positives a day in November. So that was about twenty-four percent. You go to December, we were tested, the state of Kansas throughout the whole state was tested about five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-four people. Uh, Franklin County was testing an average of eighty-nine, and remember, this is right when the, the Well Health finally came into Franklin County. Uh, so this was the majority of, of the Health Department testing these people. Uh, we had an average of twenty-two positives a day in December for twenty-four percent positivity rate per day. January, if you remember me talking, the first part of January started out pretty slow, uh, but the state of Kansas ended up testing an average of four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-four people a day. Franklin County tests, ended up testing an average of ninety people a day. Um, we found twelve positives per day with a, with a positivity rate of thirteen percent. I say all this to, in February, the state of Kansas is, to date, or up to the eighth is where their numbers ended, um, had tested two-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-eight people per day, or two-thousand-four-ninety-eight. In Franklin County, we are averaging one-hundred-and-one people per day with a positive of about five people per day with a five percent positivity rate. So, we're seeing, we've, we've seen a decrease in the state of Kansas testing, really, but, uh, we continue to see a, a little bit of influx of, of po- of testing i- in our area. So, this number, I thought might, uh, be found interesting for you guys. Uh, the, uh, other thing I wanted to point out is, I believe Commissioner Stottlemyre discussed partners that are gonna be doing vaccines. Um, as of right now, Walmart, Walgreens, Kramer Pharmacy, uh, are all under a federal contract to receive vaccines. And I, I've reached out to some of these locations. The corporate ones such as Walmart and Walgreens are really hard to determine what they're going to do with vaccines when they get them. Uh, we're hopeful that when they, they get those, they will kind of follow the same matrix that we're using, so, so we can g- get the vaccines out quicker to, uh, our sixty-five and over and, and roll into the next, the next tier. Uh, I haven't got strong, uh, confidence yet that that's gonna happen with these locations due to them getting the, the, the medications federally. Uh, Auburn Pharmacy in Wellsville, um, on their contract, they can get them from both, uh, the state or the federal government, and I'm not sure how that's gonna look. The other locations, which is Price Chopper, Rattle Family Physicians, the Health Partnership Clinic, and Advent are on the state en- enrollment. And, and my understanding with that is, all those doses will come to us. And when we hit a point where we can't distribute the amount that we get, we can start utilizing them to assist us with it. Um, thinking about where we're at, if we're getting four-hundred new doses a week, um, this Saturday, we're pushing three-hundred new doses out just on Saturday. Um, next week, we'll be pushing four hu- or two-hundred-and-ten out just on Saturday. So, you look, we only have a hundred-and-ninety to do during the week with that four-hundred we get. It's gonna be a while before we're really reliant on these other locations that are, that are under the state contract. And as Dallas said, we have reached out to Advent, and, and they, I believe, are gonna provide a couple, uh, people to help us on Saturday. And Ottawa Family Physicians have been great helping us. So, we're already working with those partnership clinics anyway. Um, so that's kind of what that's looking like. Again, I'm hopeful that I'm gonna get some solid, um, some solid discussion with Walgreens and Walmart and, and see where they're gonna be at on how they're gonna vaccinate and what they're gonna do with it. One of the concerns I do have is, we've seen it through Walgreens now with nursing facilities. If people miss their second doses, these locations, CVS and Walgreens, are telling everybody they missed in the contact the Health Department. And, uh, we, uh, haven't allocated for them on our numbers to, because Walmart or Walgreens or CVS are getting these second doses. So, the second part of the concern is, it's gonna be the second dose. If people go to Walgreens, Walmart, or these other locations to get their first dose, they're gonna need to have plans to go back to that same location, because it's gonna make it, uh, hard for us with us doing our first and seconds to have to fill in the gaps on them locations as well. So, a lot of moving parts there that I hope, um, as we move forward, we're kinda shake out and give us some confidence that it's gonna roll out smooth. Uh, with that being said, I, I really don't have a lot more to talk about unless you have questions.
Are you still seeing, is everything still coming in ten-dose vials, Nick?
Yes. Uh, uh, the Moderna, which we're getting is a ten-dose vial.
And that was another barrier you saw, that just ensured that there wasn't any waste. If we get a whole bunch of vaccination sites and everybody cracks open a ten-dose vial, we have five, six hours to use that before it's bad?
Yeah, and when we open, like you said, six, we have, we have six hours to push that out. And one of the things we've seen with the weather is, we've got a pretty strong waiting list, and our, and our, our plan is, for these individuals who need second doses, to kinda put them on the waiting list if we have no shows and that, and, and can get them in that way. But yeah, once we open that, we got six hours to distribute all ten doses.
Any questions for Nick?
This is, yeah, cool. This is Derek. Um, I, and, and Nick did a good job of outlining it. Um, but I, I would just ask, um, the Commissioners, uh, just to be patient with us. Uh, certainly, vaccines, um, being distributed to some of our partners, I mean, obviously, it's not hard to see the good in that. Like, that in and of itself is a good thing, but it also creates what is sadly just the most recent logistical nightmare for us to deal with. Because if, you know, they certainly, like Walmart, for example, is in no way bound to do what we ask them to do. And, and if they don't, and, and if they just decide to distribute vaccines on a first-come, first-served basis, and I'm not saying that they're going to, we're gonna have those discussions. But if they do, then obviously, that's gonna lead to a plethora of phone calls into the Health Department about, you know, why do I have to wait? Because my aunt went to Walmart and she got it immediately, and she's fifty-two. I mean, it's just, i- it'll be an immense challenge to stay on the same page as our partners. And obviously, we, we would love to keep a master list of who has been vaccinated and who hasn't. Um, but it's just gonna involve a lot of communication, and, and that's gotta go both ways. And, and hopefully, we are able to get on the same page, but it's just yet another thing that's gonna take a lot of time. And ju- time just isn't something that, that any of us who are working this response, i- i- we just don't have a lot more of it. And so, um, but we will do, you know, the best that we can at managing through this and, and keeping everyone on the same page. So certainly, just, I would encourage you, uh, i- if you get calls from folks, give me a call, or give Nick a call, like, um, but it just could be something that gets pretty difficult here for a while, especially if we're not all on the same page. Thank you.
Uh, this is Commissioner Don. Question from Nick. When a person gets their second shot, is there some sort of, uh, universal vaccination card that people can carry with them that say they, they've been vaccinated? Is there anything like that in the works? Yes, i- i- when you get the first vaccine, you get a little white card that basically talks about the dosage you got and everything. The second one, when you, when people come in, they, they bring that card in, we fill the second out, and, and that's the, the universal card that you have, that you carry with you that shows you've had both vaccines. Okay, that's my question. That, will that work everywhere? You know, if it's required to take an airplane flight or, or anything like that? Yeah, it's the one that we get with the vaccines that is the one that's, that's approved by the government. So yeah, that, that will work everywhere. Okay, thank you.
Well, we appreciate the update, Nick. We're gonna move on to Sheriff Richards.
Yeah, good morning. Um, as all of you can imagine, we've had, um, we've responded to several more traffic crashes, uh, over the weekend in this land so far this week. So, basically, I would like to remind everyone that, that just because the road looks clear, as David Lee could probably attest to, there's often, it, there's often times that there's ice on that, and you might hit a, you might hit a slick spot. So, people just need to be, uh, smooth on what they're doing. Don't, don't make any sudden movements in their cars and, uh, just drive as safe as they can. And, um, we've had a couple crashes that injuries were a lot more serious than they needed to be, and that's because people weren't buckled up properly. And so, I just remind everyone also to make sure that you, that they're wearing seat belts, um, while they're out, especially, um, when the, when the roads, you know, and traveling can be a little bit more hazardous. Um, moving on to, uh, some personnel, um, things, uh, as you know, we have, uh, we have good staff here, and, uh, and, uh, I wanna highlight, um, Dawson Powell, uh, this last week. He graduated from the Kansas Steel Training Academy out in Hutch, and, uh, congratulations to Dawson, and we're proud of him. Uh, he's, he's a vital part of our team, and, um, we're anxious to see him put this new training, um, to use. And so, uh, we're happy for that, and we're gonna, and we will continue, continue going, um, in that aspect. So that's all I have this morning. And if any Commissioners have questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
All right, it doesn't look like it. Thank you, Sheriff. We'll move on to David Lee.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, so the red, road and bridge staff, uh, we began treating roads on Saturday afternoon around three. Uh, we ran one shift, uh, ended around eleven o'clock Saturday night. Uh, and we have, uh, we have been treating r- the roads each day, uh, this week. Uh, all the county roads have been treated at least twice. Uh, many have been treated three or four times already. Uh, this is especially true for our hills, curves, and intersections. Uh, we've been, we've treated them multiple times, and we do have a, uh, full crew out again today, uh, treating all the roads again. Uh, this storm is different than what we've experienced the last few years in that the temperatures have been, uh, so low for so many days in a row. Uh, the effectiveness of the salt that we use on the road decreases, uh, dramatically whenever the temps dip below twenty-five degrees. Um, and, you know, we're not supposed to be above that, uh, temperature range until late next week. Uh, so, uh, we will continue to rely on, on a heavy sand mixture to treat our roads. The sand provides, uh, uh, friction material, uh, uh, friction and traction for our traveling public. Um, once the temperatures start coming back up, uh, we will, um, increase the use of salt in that mixture. But until then, um, uh, it will mostly be s- uh, sand. And so, um, um, as the conditions change, we will also, uh, adjust our tactics. This first storm, or this storm that we're fighting now, uh, had, um, um, you know, less than two inches of snow, uh, and we felt that, um, adding the, the, the heavy sand mixture to the snow would a- actually help the traveling public. Um, as Sheriff Richards said, uh, whenever you clear that, uh, snow off, uh, there's still ice on the roads, and that creates a, uh, a very slick situation as evidenced on, you know, uh, the, the state highway system. Uh, the other day, on Monday, the, uh, their, the roads were treacherous. Um, I happened to have to drive to, uh, KCI to, uh, pick someone up at the airport and witnessed, um, numerous, uh, slide-offs and near accidents, um, uh, due to excessive speeds and, and, uh, folks not, uh, defensively driving. So, i- you know, just because the roads appear to be, uh, clear, uh, fo- traveling public really needs to, uh, to be cautious out there and, and, uh, you know, lower their speed limit, uh, leave a little early, allow a little more early, allow a little more distance between you and the next driver to make it as safe as possible. If we get more snow, we will certainly begin plowing and those sorts of things if it's necessary. So with these cold temperatures, the personnel not involved with the, the snow events have been doing other projects, working out at the CND landfill and then cutting and burning dead trees around the county that have been left in piles. And so we'll continue doing that sort of work up until the weather changes for us. Also Commissioner Dunn last week asked about current costs of culverts and tires compared to years past. I compared our three most used culverts for this and, and this year we're paying 14, about $14 per foot for the 15 by 30 culverts, which represents a 22 and a half percent increase over last year. The 18 by 30 culverts are 1680, which is 22.4% higher. And then the 24 by 30s, we're paying 29 point, or 2935 a foot, which is just under 16% higher. I will say that these prices do fluctuate to some degree as we paid 1505 for the 15 by 30 culverts in 2018. And the 18 by 30 was $17 per foot that year as well. So I would imagine that supply and demand along with cost of materials each year is some of the reason for that fluctuation. On the tire, tires, on the other hand, we only saw about a 1% increase over last year. So I think the tires seem to be staying fairly steady with only slight increases. And I, that's it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
David, this is Colt. You've looked critically at so many things we do in the road and bridge department. Is culvert's one of those that's on your shortlist? I know looking at other counties, some use black ABS pipe. I mean, a lot of them do use galvanized and some use reinforced concrete tube. And then see more and more of this, the gray higher strength forgetted plastic.
We have had some preliminary discussions about, about the type of culverts that, that we allow in the county, especially when it concerns driveway entrances. And so we will continue those discussions. Last year, well, yeah, last year we had planned to attend a, oh, a, a meeting to see, to, to hear about the, the, the types of plastic pipe. But due to COVID, all of that got canceled. So that is on our radar and it is something that, that we're interested in looking at. We spend an awful lot of money on, on culverts and we install a, you know, many, many entrances every year. For most of these, something a little less substantial than the, the type of material that we use now might be warranted. I know other counties are using this and they are, they seem to hold up just fine. And so I would anticipate that sometime this year, we may be bringing a recommendation to you to change some of our regulations related to that.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for David?
David, this is Don. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
This, this is changing the subject a little bit, but I, I was reading on this here last week and I was going to wait till later to ask, but maybe I give you time to think about it. On our road graders, have we, I know maybe you hadn't been enough years involved or to know about terms and years to, but do you know what it costs us per hour? Has that ever been kept, calculated to what it costs us per hour on our motor graders for our, like, like even our loan prices or, you know, any money investments we make and anything along that part? Thanks.
I will, I have not done those calculations and, and I can't recall running across any past information that would have given those sorts of analysis. But certainly that is something that, that we can do for you.
The reason why I asked, I was reading the deal on a county right next to us that, and they do cats too. Or they all, they, they get their graders, they pay per hour for their graders. And I don't know the whole, we can talk about this some other time individually if you'd like, but, but I know they, how they, somehow they must have figured something to go another direction. And, and they actually get their, and I don't know all the facts and numbers and all the underlying things you don't see, but I do know they do, they get their graders and they, they do use Caterpillar also. They do it. They get there by the hour.
My understanding, if you're, are you referring to Miami County?
No, Coffey.
Which one? Coffey County? Okay.
And I don't know all the details. I just see, I just seen them approving it. And I just thought that was an interesting thought. I'd never, never heard that one before about actually getting, I mean, they evidently they, Caterpillar, whoever still owns the equipment and you're just renting them by the hour. And I don't know what all figures into that. So I don't know how maintenance figures into that. I don't know how insurance figures into that. So, you know, it may be something we wouldn't even consider, but it is kind of a different, evidently must mean something because they're doing it. So
Yeah. No, I, I can, I can certainly reach out and investigate that a little bit. You know, in, in essence, we have something somewhat similar to that in that we have a, a guaranteed buyback based on hours and, and years.
The only thing I would not figure into that is our borrowed money.
Correct. Correct.
You might talk to them. It may be nothing we even want to consider.
Right. No, I will, we've got some more coming up, I think later this year. So this is a conversation that is warranted. So I, I'll reach out to Coffey County and, and CAT both and, and get their takes on, on what's happening there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. Janet?
Commissioners, like Derek said, I am continuing to work on getting everything set up for your retreat on the fourth and fifth at the Holiday Inn Express. And also I am finishing up our CARES Act report for the state of Kansas that's due today. Our contractor and I are finalizing that report and making sure that it's all complete. We will report this time all the funds being expended with the exception of the remainder of the contract to be paid out with our contractor and the audit that still needs to be complete when, when our regular auditor comes. So all the other funds from the CARES Act will show spent this time. So that'll be submitted today.
All right. Let's move on to Commissioner Board reports. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything. We're just doing a lot of stuff on email and, and we did, I did, maybe I mentioned the other day the solid waste board, not the actual whole board, but just the executive board met and we're getting ready to redo a bunch of the bylaws and, and that, that's about it for now.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
Um, I had, we had four new properties for the neighborhood revitalization committee. And, you know, it seems, to you should amaze me all the, all the properties that are either being new builds or remodeling in older neighborhoods. Because if you had a new community that are subdivision, those would not qualify for the neighborhood revitalization. I also just listened to the regular meeting and the study session for the Ottawa City Commission. A lot of the things that they addressed were things that we had already talked about. They approved their board and commission assignments. They, we, they did move forward with refinancing a couple of their general obligation bonds so that they could save some money. And they talked about the agreement with the Franklin County Development Council and also their agreement with Elizabeth Layton Center. And they did finally approve their ordinance for their city officers residency to make it consistent with all of the other employees that they have. They are still working on a CDBG grant and they, that they approved and they also approved the sale of the Don Woodward Building. And they're going to be moving forward with that. It's just, it just because of the location in the flood plain, they decided it was no longer worthwhile to keep as the city. And so they have approved to move forward with the sale of that property. And that is it for me.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes. I had a PECAN meeting last Thursday. It was the Personnel Committee as part of the board. Anyway, they're just working on their personnel book and app and just taking care of personnel, some personnel questions. And we'll have the regular meeting next Tuesday. And that's all I've been at.
All right. Commissioner Harris?
I have nothing to add, Colt. I just want everybody to be safe with this weather.
Indeed. Most notable thing I did was the meeting with the city of FCDC that Derek had mentioned regarding the industrial parks covenants. So with that, look for a motion to adjourn.
And Don?
Looks like Don got the motion. Roy, were you about to second?
Well, I was going to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day and be safe and I'll second it. Adjournment.
All right. All in favor of adjourned and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.